So there's just many in twenty-one. This guy doesn't want to be on, apparently, Clark.
Oh, good.
We can't do it off the cuff like that.
No, 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 you can do it.
You sure?
So we've got to get out there, so I'm gonna give them a few more minutes.
Okay.
You can start, but I'll just let Ashley stay out there. I'll let the steward stay out there.
Okay.
Well.
We can wait, we can wait two, two, three minutes.
Okay.
Vicki, Vicki just wanted us to give her a couple more minutes because the sign-in sheet for, there was an issue with the sign-in sheet.
Dana?
Yes.
Are the mics on?
Attention. I just want to make an announcement. I just want to make a quick announcement. I know the good of the community sign-in sheet was not out, so you have a few more minutes to go and sign in. And also, the agenda item sign-in sheet was not out, so you also have a few minutes to sign in for that. Thank you for your patience. Um, I'm using for the good of the community and then.
Hey Kenny, for each of these, do I have to gavel it in and out or is it opening closed? Each of the public hearings?
I didn't have to double check with him. I had never seen it done like this before.
Okay.
Yeah, and it won't. Maybe we do because it's my side.
And, um, I have checks for the sign.
Chairman, we ready to go or?
She's gonna grab the sheets. She says for a couple minutes. Did they stop doing all the work? Is that the work? No, it's on. Yeah, it's on. So we upgraded it. So the camera above the door. I think there's one back here behind us. Yeah, they got rid of the tripods. Gotcha. Okay, we're calling the meeting to order. Call the roll?
Councilmember Bax?
Here.
Councilmember Carley?
Here.
Councilmember Miles?
Here.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Here.
Council Chairman Zajak?
Here.
All right, we have the prayer and the prayer and the pledge by Councilmember Bax.
O God, the Father of us all, we humbly beseech thee in thy wisdom and knowledge to guide and direct the deliberations of this council along the path of truth, justice, and righteousness, so that what it decides for the welfare of our citizens may also redound to thy greater honor and glory.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna start today off with some public hearings. Uh, the first public hearing is going to be relative to the application for the Restore New York Communication Municipal Grant Program and related property assessment list.
Our first speaker is Jennifer Lamoy. Using time of it. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, then this is for number one. The council chairman asks if anyone speaks to wish to speak at the public hearing relative to the application for Restore New York Communication Municipal Grant Program and related property assessment list. As a concerned citizen, I will speak here at the public hearing relative to the application for the Restore New York Communication Municipal Grant Program and related property assessment list. Absolutely no supporting documentation is on the city website to prepare city resumes on said public hearing number one. And additionally, mayor and city administrator, if you'd like to turn and face me, this might be of importance, see if you'd like to face me and hear me.
I can hear you.
Thanks to the New York State Empire State Development website, I was able to research said subject matter. For those who do not know, the objective for the Restore New York Communities Initiative, Restore New York, provides municipalities with financial assistance for the revitalization of commercial and residential properties. The program encourages community development and neighborhood growth through the elimination and redevelopment of blighted structures. Interestingly enough, there are three items of importance under the overview heading. The program was launched on Friday, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Skipping ahead to the eligibility heading for a moment, applicants must, number one, be initiated by municipalities. Number two, demonstrate at least a ten percent match. And, number three, hold a public hearing to discuss the application and property assessment list. Number three specifically requires that dialogue must occur among all in attendance. The city of Niagara Falls is a municipality. Right off the bat, we qualify. However, eligibility item number two, as you will recall, specifically requires municipalities must demonstrate at least a ten percent match. Ten percent seems small, like a discount rate, simply coming across as a fraction of a total cost. Ten percent is a big deal to the constituents, especially when eligibility number three requires that, and I quote, applicants must hold a public hearing to discuss the application and property assessment list. Signing in to speak at this public hearing without doing research is impossible, which brings me to item number two on the overview for said subject matter. The intent to apply form was due Wednesday, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Today is Wednesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. The question raised here then is that, as constituent, I reviewed the letter dated January fifth, twenty twenty-three, submitted by Chairperson David Zajak. And as you will recall, a special meeting was held on Wednesday, January eleventh, just a week ago, twenty twenty-three, which lasted five minutes for the following, to adopt a resolution to call for a public hearing relative to the application for the Restore New York Communities Municipal Grant Program and related property assessment list. The final application is due next Friday, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, by three o'clock PM Eastern Standard Time. Here I stand before you nine days prior to the due date, which in fact is simply only really six days because today's business day is over and next Friday is the due date. Again, the intent to apply form was due November thirtieth. It is clearly stated within the content of the application that no application could be accepted unless the intent to apply form was submitted. As a constituent, I am just now hearing of this in January, the present one that we are currently in. Because the city of Niagara Falls has a population between forty thousand and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, we can only apply for one project up to three million dollars with respect to the second round of Restore New York Grant Program. Ten percent of three million dollars is three hundred thousand dollars. Our city doesn't have such a surplus. In fact, as a constituent, I have yet to become informed if the administration of the city of Niagara Falls ever applied for or received any money, grant funding, from the first round of the Restore New York Grant Program. Because if a community decides to reapply for a project not funded in the present round, said municipality does not have to file another letter of intent and will be deemed eligible. While I tried to obtain clarification for not only myself in order to be prepared to speak, as well as my fellow constituents, I was beyond astounded to review the notice in the Niagara Gazette today, yesterday, and this past Saturday. The notice of public hearing is invalid. The New York State of Opportunity Division of Local Government Services Local Government Technical Site Series sets forth rules and regulations that must be followed, meaning must be required, for conducting public meetings and public hearings. As you know, democracy, that a precious jewel shines most brightly in the light of an open government. The agency on which we are applying for a grant is not, as it is stated in the notice, New York State Empire Development Corporation, E S D C, as it is stated within the content of the notice. The agency on which we are applying for grants is New York Empire State Development Corporation, E S D C. Within the notice, it clearly states, members, and I quote, "Members of the public are invited to attend and participate in the public hearing, the possible grant application submission." Well, the fact of the matter is that this is simply not true at all whatsoever. Because the intent to apply form was due by five o'clock Eastern Standard Time on Wednesday, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Additionally, the property assessment list was, and I quote, "compiled by the city of Niagara Falls." Please tell me how a city compiles a list. It's impossible. A city is simply a large town and clearly incapable of compiling a list. And by the way, if there's even a smidge of confusion relating to whose city Niagara Falls is, it's our city. And I'm a firm believer that we need to start recognizing such. It not, it's not the mayor's city only, it's not any of the council member's city only, whether you are homeless, walking in our streets, or the wealthiest or oldest within, this is our city. And with respect to the property assessment list, a list is not a list when only one line item is on it. For constituents that don't know, the only line item is aisle one nine Kyuga Drive, which is the, which the current use characterization is abandoned commercial. The notice in the paper has the size of square footage, that is, at ten thousand one hundred and one. The square footage of said property is six thousand two hundred and ninety-three. Our administration is abusing power. Discrepancies in square footage and misrepresentation may lead to lawsuits. Item number eighteen on today's agenda for said subject safety relative to Restore New York Communities Initiative Municipal Grant Program application is being recommended by Councilwoman Tracy Bax, Councilman Tompkins, and Chairman Zajak. If item number eighteen is approved today, I will file a complaint on behalf of our community with the New York State Attorney General's Office because the truth of the matter here is that ultimately, our administration's proposed outcome is rehabilitation craft brewing company. There must be consequences for such. In fact, the notice in the Niagara Gazette on January fourteenth, January seventeenth, and today, January eighteenth, doesn't include any council member names of those supporting this project. This reoccurring behavior is being critiqued due to administration being neither penetrative nor inclusive enough. In conclusion, beginning tomorrow, Thursday, January nineteenth, there are only seven business days remaining to legally handle this matter. As a transparent constituent, I called out the law. A special meeting needs to be scheduled in order to adopt another resolution to call for a public hearing relative to the application of the Restore New York Communities Municipal Grant Program and related property assessment list. Additionally, new revised notices can be published in the Niagara Gazette, and another public hearing for said subject matter can be held. Any other way of doing this would be corrupt. However, I will close with a reminder to you that the final application is due by three o'clock PM Eastern Standard Time next Friday, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. And, if you didn't already know, because our administration has already set this all up, it is imperative to state here that there is toxic water in Kyuga Creek. Leave it alone. Create a more appropriate property assessment list. Then, we can use the funds, if we're approved, for what they're truly meant to be for. Additionally, I am so glad that I was able to finish it because I was offered five hundred dollars cash to not come here today, and I surely could use five hundred dollars cash. But my fellow constituents, our constituents, mean more to me than any amount of money. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Prior. Down, correction, down.
I strongly support the city of Niagara Falls application for the Restore New York Grant for five nineteen Kyuga Drive. Prior to this property being purchased by William Behrens, the property was vacant for sixteen years. The property did not pay property taxes for, since two thousand and six. It's been a nice sort of community. It's an old abandoned, uh, store. Previous, I won't criticize, previous, the administration has been working to get the LaSalle area and Kyuga alive again. I, I live in LaSalle. Next, I'm paying all the property. Father property is cleaning up the inside, he's cleaning up the outside. He's paid to pass through taxes on the property. He's paid to pass through water building the property. Um, if the city approves the grant today, they'll, they'll spend up to two million dollars on that property. And the tenth, the ten percent is not coming from the city of Niagara Falls. The ten percent, way more than that, is coming from the owner of the property. Not any money from the city of Niagara Falls or the taxpayers of Niagara Falls. Um, the property will also create three market rate apartments above the property, which is definitely a need in the LaSalle area for market rate apartments. Again, all my apartments are filled and, and I get calls every, every week for people looking for market rate apartments in the LaSalle area. This property is also gonna probably employ ten to twenty people. It'll be the anchor of the Buffalo Avenue or Kyuga Drive Business District. A, a place called Culver's just recently opened up. We've had some other businesses open up along Buffalo Avenue, including a barbecue place. I think that Buffalo Avenue Strip is a new hotspot of the city of Niagara Falls as far as businesses employing people and paying property taxes and sales taxes. I'll commend the mayor for supporting that portion of town and not just the downtown area. And one of the things that the Restore New York Grant is supposed to do is revitalize the area. Let's say a year ago, two years ago, there was two vacant properties next to these properties. Since Mr. Behrens has started working on this property, those properties have been gobbled up and, and quickly sold for more than the asking price on both properties. And I think with this development, you'll see more residential properties and more commercial properties in the area. And I'm gonna commend the city and Mr. Behrens both for working together and getting this done and without any cost at all to the taxpayers of Niagara Falls.
Our final speaker is Jennifer Lamoy.
Hello. It's interesting that we only got three speakers on this. It's, it's really something. Talking about abandoned property and what's good and, I've been talking about abandoned property for years, that the city abandoned.
Ms. Prior, speaking about the Restore New York.
I know, but it's, 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 okay. Okay. My thing is, okay, I'll just say, I'll just kudos Jennifer, because Jennifer took a lot of work and energy. Lot of documentation. I'm not a technical person, and I would be lost in the sauce. I could not understand one word of what's going on. So we all need to appreciate Jennifer and the time that she don't get paid for. Okay? Maybe she need a stipend, then that don't, you know, go against her wages, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna close that public hearing. Our next public hearing, relative to the proposed abandonment of a portion of Seventeenth Street between Pennsylvania Avenue and Delaware Ave. Seventeenth, sorry.
Our lead speaker is Jennifer Lamoy.
That's the only one?
Yeah.
I thought I put it down. No, we're gonna out there. I don't think I speak. I don't think you're out there, I didn't say it. No, well, I didn't see it.
Go ahead, Ms. Prior.
Thank you. Okay, not me?
Public hearing relative to the proposed abandonment of a portion of Seventeenth Street between Pennsylvania and Delaware Avenue. First of all, the notice in the Niagara Gazette is invalid. Reason being is due to the fact that there is a typo. Said typo is the incorrect spelling of the word "portion." Analytically speaking, there is only one T in said word. In fact, P O R T T I O N, which is now permanently closed, was an online platform for ordering healthy meals in our Worthington, Ohio, area of the United States of America. Our community wouldn't want any prospective investors to become confused with thinking that said delivery restaurant was ever situated in what I believe is nothing less than a completely toxic environment. Let's be clear here and transparent. Call it what it is. The proposed abandoned property, the proposed abandonment of a portion of Seventeenth Street between Pennsylvania Avenue and Delaware Avenue is a contaminated property. I urge you to never go near it. If you are present in this room now and prior to my speaking expressed interest in purchasing it, please reconsider such as I wouldn't permit my family nor I to step within one inch of it. In the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties, factories used to be in that area. Nine properties were found on the tax records after I researched homefax.com. If you know anyone who resides at seventeen oh two, seventeen oh two and a half, seventeen oh five, seventeen oh six, seventeen oh eight, seventeen thirty-five, seventeen thirty-seven, seventeen forty-one, and/or seventeen forty-three Pennsylvania Avenue, I strongly urge you to have said individuals obtained from their primary care physician blood work paperwork as soon as possible. I found three properties on Delaware Avenue, twenty-two eighty-seven, twenty-five sixty-four, and twenty-nine ninety-eight. The concept of abandonment means an owner or la cie voluntarily relinquishes or surrenders their property right. When someone proposes an idea or plan, one must put forward said idea or plan for consideration or discussion by others. Our administration is doing dirt deals with investors, billionaires, private enterprises. The goal here ultimately is to sell all these abandoned properties to investors. The administration's goal of selling off these properties, this corrupt behavior will devastate the constituents of our city of Niagara Falls. I, as well as my fellow constituents, feel like someone has a foot inside the entrance door to our city. And said someone, our administration, has been and continues to do anything and everything that they can to push their way through. Let's not minimize what's really happening here. Use the apparent surplus. And again, for the other speaker, because this is important if I do this, the three hundred thousand dollars would come from our taxpaying money, the constituents. Okay, so let's use the apparent surplus of this three hundred thousand dollars, which is the ten percent, right? That you are gonna use towards the first public hearing that I most recently became aware of and have an environmental impact study completed. Prove me wrong.
Can we close that public hearing?
Oh, now it's closed?
Yes, you didn't sign up, Ms. Prior.
Uh, well, first of all, it was confusing with the paperwork or what was able to be signed on, on behalf of the city. But, uh, oh, okay, okay, but kudos for Mr. DeMoo, uh, uh-huh. Jennifer, again, thank you very much. She did a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Prior. Okay, our next public hearing, relative to the abandonment of the alley situated south of James Ave and parallel to Highland Ave.
Our own, our speaker is Jennifer Lamoy.
Can you give me just one moment, please? Only because there's just like five of these today. Okay. Okay, give me a second here. Let's just go with. The council chairman asked if anyone wished to speak at the public hearing relative to abandonment of the alley situated south of James Ave and parallel to Highland Ave. In addition to what I stated with the first two items, we cannot contain this. We need to protect the community. We need to clean up that area. However, cleanup will have to be done no matter what, right? Dioxins, toxic material residue. In the nineteen fifties, as I said it before, in the nineteen sixties, factories, including a battery company. What do you think is in batteries? Lead-infested areas, completely contaminated, melted lead, areas polluted with lead dust and fumes. Volatil chemicals, agents, other heavy metals, asbestos, contaminated materials. Leave it alone or place solar panels, right? Maybe those are some of the investors who want to just cover it up. It reminds me of like Love Canal. Place solar panels that are made in the United States there over these areas, and it'll lower our electric bills, clearly. I wonder what the Environmental Protection Agency thinks of all this, the EPA. I wonder what the Department of Environmental Conservation thinks of all of this, the DEC. Are they aware of these public hearings? Did you reach out to them, administration? Check the public records. Matter of fact, I'm wondering if we should reach out to the Internal Revenue Service. Oh, and by the way, moving forward, our property taxes aren't going down, ever. Councilwoman Bax, you posed this question to our mayor regarding Centennial Park. Our mayor was not transparent with you, ma'am. I believe that as our, our administration is pocketing our money. Let's be honest. You know the old saying, get it while in power, get out of Dodge went out. I might as well just stay up here, right? I'm the only speaker for the next one? Oh, good. Break time.
Our next speaker is Jonathanine Prior.
Once again, I'm gonna say, for the city that we have, how diverse and the wonder of the world, it is a shame that it takes two females to stand up here for the city. of the world, it is a shame that it takes two females to stand up here for the city. Well, maybe I should run for mayor.
That's right.
Now, Jen did a lot of work, okay? Going back to the work that's required. You know, I do a lot of work too, but the work Jen does is on the computers and the internet and all that technology that I don't do. Now, I do do work, but mine is hard copy. Your copy what you're heading on at Niagara Falls City, uh, the City of Niagara Falls, correct, Mr. Carley? That I, you know, you was very good at, you know, taking my concerns seriously. You just been on, you know, just weeks, but you took the time and you was on time. And as long as you like that, I'm gonna deal with you. I'm gonna show you what's going on.
Listen to Lemoine, listen to the public hearing.
I'm not listen to Lemoine, I'm Ms. Prior. Uh-huh, but I sound like her though, don't I? Because we work together, but like I said, she do what I can't do. But the whole thing is kudos to her and again, y'all owe her another stipend.
Thank you. Close that public hearing. Our next public hearing relative to the proposed abandonment of a portion of Second Street, Whirlpool, north of Walnut Ave.
Our first speaker is Jennifer Lemoine.
Okay, just so everybody understands here too, if we can say this again, this is with respect to the proposed abandonment of a portion of Second Street. And it's in brackets, Whirlpool, so think of that area, and it's north of Walnut Ave. Okay, so on Walnut Ave., there's many people, thousands of people. They should have been invited to this. They should have gotten personally invited to this. I would have thought our city administration would have actually went door to door. If I can just mention here, I remember campaigning for the mayor, if I can go back, and this is very important because he stated he wouldn't go to doors, that he didn't know the people. He only went to the neighborhoods that he felt comfortable in and he didn't know the people.
Miss Lemoine, please only on the public hearing.
Okay, but that's important to mention because if you're uncomfortable coming to Walnut Ave. and you don't know any of those people, those are thousands of people that are... It's not funny, mayor. It's not funny. Stop laughing. You're the joke. The joke's on you.
Miss Lemoine.
I called your bluff. I called your bluff.
Miss Lemoine, please keep an eye on point. Please.
Stop laughing at me and stop laughing at everybody, please.
Miss Lemoine.
Simmer down. Stop it. Second Street, that's the other one on there, right? Yes, for Whirlpool. Now, interestingly enough, the only property that I could find on Second Street was 462nd, 467 Second Street. And right in the picture for the property, for city records, in the background, of course, is Seneca and Ira Casino and Hotel, right? You know, beloved, I used to work for them, there's no concerns there. But here's the thing, it's prime property, right? Contaminated area. Again, we cannot contain this. Protect the community. Cleanup will have to be done. Why do you think it's abandoned? Again, these individuals that live on Walnut Ave. and that specific house, 462nd, 467 Second Street, why do you think that's the only house there on Second Street? Protect the community. Cleanup will have to be done. But again, how can you be certain if you're going to get every little bit of that? You know, even when cleanup's done, you got these gates and fences and then things covering things up. And then, I recall to the best of my knowledge with one of these, and I don't have to be exact because this happens with each and every one, when they do put up fences, the city, that is, then they move those fences to make them convenient for them in order for investors to purchase those properties. Dioxins, toxic material residue, again. Well, not in this specific circumstance, so we can't bring up the 1950s and 1960s, but that's back when this started. So I can't even bring up the battery company because that's the other locations. Lead-infested areas, completely contaminated, melted lead, areas polluted with lead dust and fumes, volatile chemicals. Like, you know, like when I say this, I hope everybody's understanding this, like, really, I wouldn't even step within a hair, when I say an inch earlier, within a hair of this. Other heavy materials, metals, asbestos, contaminated materials. Leave it alone or place solar panels that are made in the United States there. It'll lower our electric bills. Again, I wonder what the EPA thinks of this line item or the DEC. Check the public records. I can back up everything that I state. I never stand up here and say anything other than the truth. Transparency. Matter of fact, again, for each one of these, including the next, the Internal Revenue Service should be notified. And again, I have to point this out because it's important because this stood out to me when I even said ahead as part of my last speech, but it's for every one of them. By the way, moving forward, stated that our property taxes aren't going, excuse me, when, let me say this so that we don't confuse everybody, when it was the Centennial Park discussion and then Councilwoman Bax had stated, "Mayor, if I'm correct in stating correctly here that the taxes aren't going to go up," correct, with respect to...
Miss Lemoine, what does this have to do with the agenda?
No, it does. What I'm trying to point out here, please...
Taxes at Centennial Park have nothing to do with this public hearing.
It does because this is our administration being corrupt and our mayor is not transparent with us or with you, ma'am. Yes, it does.
It does not, ma'am.
I just do not want to see anyone in harm's way in our community in these areas, the abandoned properties. Why do you think they're abandoned? If someone was interested in purchasing them previously, and I'm sure there's investors here, I'm well aware of the people that, you know, normally don't come to meetings, if you look around. Thank you so much. I'll talk to you in a moment.
Good evening. I am Gerald Scherlin. I live here in Niagara Falls, 162 Buffalo Ave., Niagara Falls, New York. Can you, can you hear me well? Okay. I want to speak on Agenda Item 13.
Mr. Scherlin? This is the public hearing. This is still a public hearing.
This is about the Second Street.
Right, for the public hearing.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, I want to make sure.
It said number 13 on, 10 plus 3.
Right, but we're on the public hearing.
Oh, well, am I in the right place?
If you're speaking about the abandonment, go ahead.
And for laughs, there is no time limit on me speaking?
Correct.
So I could really pull off a filibuster, couldn't I? Okay, forget the jokes. Jokes come at the end, okay? On this issue, all I know is from what this guy over here writes in the paper a lot of times, and that says that the mayor and New York State are making an agreement together to give up Second Street. Yeah, 66 feet by 2,000 feet, that's what this is, to give up that much land to New York State. Now, one of the reasons why I mention this is because New York State doesn't have such a good track record in developing here in Niagara Falls. Look, all the way from the apartments, Jefferson Apartments, the city has interests in all of those places. And now we're going to give away 66 feet by 2,000 feet, which would provide an excellent corridor area, area to move over into Third Street. And if, I don't know if anybody remembers, but it was Assemblywoman Del Monte who got three and a half million dollars for Third Street. Now, we gonna let that money go to waste? We can't let that money go to waste, but no, we're going to give what appears to be maybe one, one acre or maybe two acres, we're going to give it to the state and we lose the tax from that basis, but we also lose an opportunity to give the smaller businessmen a stakehold in our local economy. Now, I have a stakehold in our local economy, but one of the difficult things which I have with protecting my interests is the secrecy with which things are carried out. Now, what I say to this is, we have all of this land that we have committed into the hands of the state and we see nothing, no information, or very, very little information coming out as to what is going on in these areas. And what does it do for me? I'm a stakeholder. I have property down in the core tourist zone, very valuable property, and I want to develop it in time with the progress that this city is making. I was actually about 22 years ahead of the city when I started it. Okay. So it comes down to the issue of who these people are. I don't know who these people are who are making these decisions, who are deciding these things, and why we really haven't been informed properly. I have not the proper information to rely on at this moment to invest in a commercial property that I believe is valuable. What we need is that land back because as Dr. Wayland wrote in his discussion with Niagara University about Centennial Park, that to have a 7,000-seat stadium only one third full, that nobody playing at a concert is going to like that, neither the Senecas with their concerts. So the ideal place to have what Mr. Wayland described is right where the proposal is to give it to the state. That would be such a wonderful place to put Mr. Wayland's vision of what he saw. And if you know what I talk about, what I am talking about, it was about Mark Scheer's article in the paper in which I think it was Mr. Patrick Wayland was the guest view, where he gave everybody the laydown about the Centennial Park project and how that it's better to go by statistics than by gut feelings and actually grandstanding and looking towards the future without, with many negative issues facing, facing, okay, I'm sorry, I got into that. Now, I wrote this down. I heard our mayor speaking once and he said, "The city has decided, the city has decided." But I, I was a little bit irritated by it because we need a clear definition of who the city is, who the administration is, and who the people are who are making these decisions because then we can take all that information, we can collect that data, and we can look for the correlations and come up with some answers which may interest you in the political science field. I will end with this here. Okay, a clear definition of who is responsible for decision-making and that the absence of penalties for those who make them is preposterous to many governing elites to think of the status quo being any other way except in the imaginations and perceptions of their reasoning. And in this, we all fail. Thank you. May God bless Niagara Falls.
Our next speaker is Michael Goddard. Our next speaker is Jennifer Lemoine.
Once again, I'm gonna tell you about the work it takes, okay? Why everybody going to their jobs and talking about KW at work or whatever, or your kids or whatever. Everybody got kids. Nobody ain't got time to be online because if it wasn't for Jennifer, I wouldn't know a lot of stuff that I'll tell you later on. But once again, whatever Jennifer said, I second it. And once again, that's, I think it's about up to like three stipends that you owe her, okay? The city, Facebook, I don't know how you get the money, but she's owed. The city owes her. You all owe her. Thank you.
Close that public hearing. All right, our final public hearing on the proposed abandonment of a 330-foot portion of Delaware Ave.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Lemoine.
Here is a proposed abandonment of a 330-foot portion of Delaware Ave. So back to Delaware Ave., again, if you know anyone that lives at 2287, 2564, and/or 2998 Delaware Ave., as I had stated previously with respect to the blood work, these things do turn up in your blood work. I'm not speaking for experience. I never want to speak from experience. Additionally, if I may, because it was imperative to the previous, in my paperwork here, again, that Walnut Ave., many people, Second Street, just the one, 462nd, 67 Second Street. Highland Ave., earlier than that was number three, but it pertains, so it's not like I'm taking someone's time. The address is 3501, 3526, 3530, 3711, which is Highland Ave. Church, and 3800 Industrial Building. And James Ave., 19 homes. Can you imagine? I would hate to live at James Ave., you know, I was one of those 19 homes that was in really close proximity to a toxic environment. And again, I look around at individuals and you can tell because of the way they're dressed. For Chil Park because underneath it is toxic material, okay? You can seep through it anytime, it's so clear. And additionally, the way they move around these fences and such. And additionally, if you are going to go ahead and cover with solar panels, make certain that you clean up that area. But do you, I mean, it's clear, right? You can't clean that all up. You can't clean that all up. I mean, it's clear, right? You can't. It's impossible. We all know that. So let's just remember those addresses if you need them. You can see me after the meeting, you know? I can post them on Facebook, what have you. But I'm just thinking that if I were the mayor, which I would never run for mayor because then I wouldn't be able to speak here and call it the bluffs. Right. If I were the mayor, I would have personally went before anything before this, even like I was saying, when you can first apply for this, because we all know, right? She was here when the mayor was sworn in. Kathy Hochul is the person that's going to award this money. $3 million, that first one, right? So think of this, a bar, rehabilitating a bar. I know somebody was for it. I respect you, sir, your opinion, but at the same time, we all know that $300,000 is coming from that 10%, the constituents. And again, excuse me? Okay. The thing is, is you understand that at the end of the day, the taxes are not going to, and this is what I'm saying, that's the point I was trying to make, they're not going to stay where they're at. They're going to continue to rise. We're double paying right now for trash fees, right? It's already in our taxes. When I bought my house, that was included in my taxes. You understand? I understand. I'm sticking to the point, but you get what I'm saying? So this, as well as everything else, including the park, which I know has nothing to do with these, is going to only make that go up, right? Thank you so much.
Our final speaker is Jennifer Lemoine. Our final speaker is Jaclyn Prior.
Y'all ready for me? Okay. Once again, I'm gonna tell you how many hours it take, how much sleep you don't get when you see so much going on at one time. All our community members, all our, you know, clubs and committees and all things that people aren't where you're at. It's ridiculous that only two speakers are speaking up for the whole city. Why? Because you need a job? Or you ain't gonna have a home? Or you might get arrested? Or say you need to go to the hospital? Which one is it? Once again, once again, oh, no, no, I'm taking a breath because I've been up here so many times, you know? You know, my leg is hurting, I am on disability, but I'm about to wrap it up. Once again, it takes a lot of time and energy. It's not fun when you're talking about the city that you love. Now, I'm about to, you see me all the time, but I'm about to walk away from this city. I'm not gonna be banging my head, arguing with my family, all this kind of stuff, because they telling me it's a no-win situation. And I said, "I don't believe it." I do not believe it. I will not believe it. And later on, I'll tell you why. But once again, I think you'd be up to like four sty pins, five sty pins allotment per year, whatever amount for Jen. So, can we get that accounting together? I don't want no money, okay? And if you want to give me some, give it to her. Give it to her son, because he got to be dragged in here and listen to his mom trying to save the city that ain't trying to save themselves.
Close that public hearing. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chair, for, uh, there is an amendment, item 21, which is relative to the plans to the planning board. The one individual on the list for appointment, Gregory Larkin, declined the appointment due, and there is a proposal to include Governor Callan of 11th and C Street here in the city as the replacement for Mr. Larkin to fill the vacancy on the planning board. So, we would need an amendment, or excuse me, we would need a motion to amend item number 21 to include Ms. Callan as opposed to Mr. Larkin.
Councilmember Bax, Councilmember Carly, Councilmember Miles, Councilmember Tompkins, Council Chairman Zajak. This item has been approved for amendment.
And that will be item number 21 as amended.
Public speaker number one is Jennifer Lamoy.
Agenda items number three, number four to 11. And resolution item number 12, 13, 14, 15, and 18. Excuse me, I didn't bring the agenda up here. Item number three, mayor's approval of resolution 2022-65. An elaboration of such is required by constituents. The question arises as trust is paramount when it comes to the administration of the city of Niagara Falls, New York. Trust thrives when transparency and accountability are encouraged. Now, if I'm confusing you here, mayor's approval of resolution 2022-65. What is that? Item number four through 11. If Mayor Robert Restino is not present at a city council meeting and items for council action from the mayor are on the agenda, the mayor is required to present leaders and coworkers' trust their own judgment less than they trust unbiased practices. High-functioning organizations create clear targets for their teams, and if those targets move, they communicate that effectively. Trust in our city council and our administration thrives in a culture of transparency and accountability. We must remove the barriers. The constituents are open to change, as you can see. However, constituents can only do so much, especially when, let's be honest here, our administration. As humans, we are social creatures that are susceptible to the tribal trap, the notion that the group to which we belong is exemplary or more worthy than those outside our group. Our core values and beliefs become an unwavering anchor for our identity and our tribe. Without even knowing it, we treat any divergence from our beliefs as other or alien. This results in us trusting ourselves and those we perceive to be in our group too much, while trusting outsiders less or not at all. Humans are susceptible to deception, and the main culprit of deceit is often our own unconscious mind. If you are thinking and believing that you are some exception to this, that's the trap. We overestimate our sense of judgment and our objectivity, exonerating our beliefs and convicting others for their own. We enter many situations with a conclusion in mind and only pay attention to evidence that confirms that conclusion. Gone unchecked, most of us will fall back on our biases to decide who is worthy of our trust and who is not, based on almost no information at all, which will quickly lead to tribalism. And let's go now to resolution item number 12, which is relative to the partial abandonment of the alley situated south of James Avenue and parallel to Highland Avenue. Leave it alone, or clean it up, which we all know we can't, or cover it up with solar panels. Resolution item number 13, relative to the partial abandonment of portion of Second Street, which is Whirlpool Street north of Walnut Avenue. Again, same thing. Resolution item number 14, relative to the partial abandonment of a portion of 17th Street between Pennsylvania Avenue and Delaware Avenue. Again, the same thing. Number 15, relative to the partial abandonment of a 330-foot portion of Delaware Avenue. Very same thing. And if you moved to, which is really odd, I found this, that it moved to 18. It was the first thing for a public hearing, but yet they snuck it in, you see? And it's funny, the wording here. Number 18, relative to restore New York Communities Initiative Municipal Grant Program application. We forgot to put the assessment list in there, remember the one thing? Remember, a list is a list. Let's just go off to say for a moment, if I said to my son, "Your birthday's coming up, make a birthday list." He's not going to put one thing on there, he's going to give me a list, right? At the end of the day too, because I have 25 seconds, there were three officers, I don't know if there still are, in the room here. I don't know why one officer wouldn't have been sufficient. That's a waste and abuse of power, waste of our tax-paying money. Additionally, I have 12 seconds left. And additionally also, with respect to the entire world honoring Damar Hamlin, because this is important to state here, the mayor had it all in holiday colors, but never lit it up for red and blue here. It was always red and green in the front. Yes, thank you.
Our next speaker is Chair, two, agenda item number four and 19 through 22.
So, I came tonight to talk about the dysfunction of this administration, specific to these agenda items. I was surprised there was no sign-up sheet out there when I came that had to be made. So, I, I'm just kind of flabbergasted at the dysfunction here. Last night, there was supposed to be a zoning board meeting. There were, I think, six items on that agenda. That meeting couldn't happen because the zoning board wasn't complete. Because tonight, you all are renewing the zoning board and putting on additional members of the zoning board, right? How, I mean, every year at this time, that happens, the zoning board and other boards are renewed. I happen to have been on the Tourism Advisory Board. As another example of dysfunction, I received an email, not from any of you, but from Mr. Spanbauer, who's no longer part of this board, or City Council, letting us know that the Tourism Advisory Board was not going to be renewed. It wasn't a surprise. We'd stopped a meeting in June after we realized the waste of our valuable time that was occurring. It's a volunteer board that's been in place for years, and not a single thing, to my knowledge, has come out of it. Because when we come to you with proposals, they're shut down. We came with a very well-put-together, thought-out, and proper proposal that, you know, was shut down. It was in relation to having open container law on Third Street, and you just said, "Ah, we'll just work it into the process with special events," instead of recognizing the marketing value and potential that that would have for tourism. But honestly, in relation to number four, if I get on my specific topics here, as I understand it, the specific position that we're looking for approval to reprogram and use Community Development Block Grants for is a position that in July of last year was eliminated, and it happened to the position that Councilman Miles held. And my understanding is that, you know, after Miles, Councilman Miles spoke out and voted down on several different initiatives that the mayor had proposed, this was his way of letting him know that you just don't do that. So, I'm baffled that we sit here tonight as we discuss an agenda item to fund that position again, that same position, six months, you know? I don't know why retaliation law, oh, wait, I know why a retaliation lawsuit couldn't be filed. That would have taken money. Mr. Miles had lost his job. What kind of money did he have to file that? The dysfunction in this city is blowing my mind. I was so excited to be on the Tourism Advisory Board and try and make an impact and have a difference, even after sitting through several council meetings for, I don't know, a year and a half, as we watched the short-term rental zone take place. And I, you know, I guess I was naive. I should have listened to the people who said, "You'll never change this city." The dysfunction. So, now, Mr. Miles gets to vote tonight on funding a position that he got defunded and lost his job over with the mayor sitting right here, who's the one who made that happen. It just, it just absolutely baffles me at the corruption that is blatant in front of us, right here happening. So, I don't know what else to say at this point. I'm, I think like, the reason why you don't see a lot of folks coming out here to speak anymore is because we're not listened to. I think this is the first meeting that I've seen the mayor at, the city council meeting, in over a year. And I guess it's because he's required to be here or something, based on what she read. I'm not positive, but glad he's here tonight to hear us. I don't think it's going to do any good, but we'll speak.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Jennifer Lamoy.
Jaclyn, when you come forth, can you please tell us which agenda items you're speaking on?
One to 23, plus the walk-on, plus the walk-on, who was walk-on? Okay? And again, I can do my homework for this. So, I rely on Jen doing the homework for everyone in the city. Even if you gave her a dime, maybe a penny, and put it right here in the council's office for the people that's working for this city, maybe I got some change. Give it to her son. Give it to her, give it for gas. This is not a joke. It's not a joke, and you're going to be held accountable. Thank you. Jen, go to the bank.
There's a couple of items that I just want to make sure the council is familiar with. One of the items is agenda item, bear with me, agenda item 10, agenda item number 10. You may recall, obviously before, I think before all of us, with the exception of Councilmember Tompkins, in 2019, there was an approval of a local waterfront revitalization program. When, obviously, upon the arrival of our administration, you know, those first 20 months were without the opportunity to do a whole lot as a result of the pandemic and the affiliated executive orders. Subsequent to that, there were some staff changes. We now, just this past fall, have a full staff in our planning department, and so we're putting forward this resolution tonight. And the purpose behind this revitalization program is to allow the local community to determine how best to develop the waterfront. Now, waterfront is going to be part of the conversation that the consultant will, excuse me, will lead through. Certainly, it means everything from Devil's Hole all the way to the boat docks, but it could also mean, and would also mean, Gil Creek, Hugo Creek, all of those areas that reflect waterfront, and how that, how that term is defined. Previously, a council previous to this had approved the city's matching portion in 2019. And so, that funding is sitting in a capital line. And essentially, the balance, or some nearly $500,000, is the state's grant to the city to put together this revitalization program. Part of, part of what will come out of this is the identification of projects, the potential for certain levels of development. It'll include, obviously, the collection of data, our opportunity to have public meetings to talk about these potential projects and the development of the waterfront. So, this really is an opportunity for the city locals to define a revitalization for our waterfront. And again, I don't want, I don't want to, waterfront can include even those areas, as I say, along the creeks, and the areas that pass through the city. So, it's an opportunity for the city to take advantage of some significant funding that the state is providing by grant. It's assigned to us. We just need to be able to motivate it forward, and this consultant, the purpose of this consultant is to assist us in doing that. With regard to, I think, item, item number 17, the hazard mitigation, we're in constant contact with the Niagara County Services, Emergency Services, and there was a coordination of effort with regard to what we needed, as well as, you know, how we can assist neighboring communities. This mitigation plan is also an important piece for us to present to the state in terms of our preparedness and our readiness for these. I mean, you can see what happened all throughout Erie County. There was a, there was a disconnect in so many of the areas. And so, while we're not perfect, certainly, all of the communities of Niagara County engaged in this, and it was motivated, excuse me, it was moderated by the University of Buffalo, and that's what helped us create the plan. Just want to make sure, you'll note that we also have, as we continue to go through our public safety procurements, we have a couple of items on the agenda tonight relative to our fire department. couple of items on the agenda tonight relative to our fire department and not only the acquisition of more modern equipment, but also the outfitting of the equipment in order for us to be able to service some of the new structures that we have in our community. And I believe those are items, if you'll forgive me, items six and seven. We continue to, the city's position with regard to the cryptocurrency industry, they have filed Article 78 petitions contesting our action with regard to the, to the piece of legislation. And we have, we have a, an application pending for their contempt for not ceasing their operations, pending their application to comply with, with our statute. I've been in contact with the residents, many of the residents in the South End. I have visited with them just to kind of update them on where the litigation is going. Just today, as a matter of fact, I had a conversation with a couple of them, you know, appreciating their patience because the court proceeding at University relative to student housing. You know that we most recently had, and I think all of the council were present, we most recently had a meeting at Maple Avenue School in connection with that topic. And we have had our, one of our outside council to start exploring the creation of some legislation that we would prepare for consideration with regard to the issue of student housing in certain districts. So we're, we're moving forward on all of those things. And the continuation of the discussion with the event center, with the property owner continues. Obviously, until there's no more talking, we'll continue to have a conversation to try and see if there's a way to resolve the matter, short of any litigation. I think, I think that that sums up where the administration's update would be.
Steve, we had a controller earlier. There's going to be no controllers report today. That may change for the next meeting.
Fair enough. Okay, we'll go to review of the agenda items.
Agenda item number one.
Agenda item number two.
Just three, just the top three items. Just curious if someone could explain what they refer to vital statistics, location area engineers, additional dogs.
These are, these are licenses, council member, and/or the application for a death certificate or a, or a birth certificate. Those are typically the vital statistics requests that are made. And so these are requests for licenses or requests for documents. And these, this is the revenue generated from those items.
They apply for applications for licenses and test fees in order for, in order for them to be able to obtain a license to operate in the city. Now, are they, would they be on any specific project or just, just applying just a half of a license?
You want to have a license to operate, you would apply for a license, yes. Same thing you'll see also, you'll see on your electricians. It's the same situation. I want to just, since we're on here, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna, I think you may have heard me say this a couple of meetings back, please be prepared to have a conversation about stray animals and how we handle that.
Agenda item number two. Agenda item, now I know you can't see much regarding this, but in terms of status, these are just, I've just said notice, but is there a process between the claim and the motion? Is there something in terms of procedure?
In order for you to commence an action against the municipality, you have to file a notice of claim. The notice of claim in broad brushstrokes outlines what, where, and when. After that, you have to perfect your claim by the service of a summons and complaint. In that window, the city would have the opportunity to conduct a hearing to sort of dive more deeply into what the general notice of claim states. So these are simply indicating to you that these claims are filed in the month of December. Obviously, there's not much more known at this point because they were filed last month. This document was prepared on the 4th, so you can imagine that not much has, not much has developed with any of these cases.
So will we, so in terms of someone's claim in personal injury and civil rights violations, someone in the administration knows what that person is referring to? And they've heard of?
Well, I don't know if anyone in the administration knows, but I know that a notice of claim was filed. And that notice of claim would have, again, that real brief, what, where, when. And then more will have to be expounded on as that claim moves forward.
Item number, item number three?
Yes, number three. Is this, this is concerning the sewer ladder. So is this basically stating that, like, the sinkholes that may happen in front of someone's home, is that going to be the responsibility of the homeowner? So if it is connected to the sewer ladder?
Well, to be clear, to be clear, it's always been that responsibility. This isn't a change in the law. What this does is, this law, if you recall correctly on it, simply defined more clearly what the cities and the water board would be doing with regard to examining, sort of expounded on a, what was a real limited piece in the codified ordinance. It broadened what it is that the city would do relative to notice and then moving forward with regard to, you know, repair on the part of, on the part of the property owner, business or residential.
So in the event that, let's say it's a slumlord, and they're not, and they're not present, they're not responding or whatever the case is, and that hole is getting worse and of course cars are getting damaged along the way, how are we going to address that?
Well, I think the statute defines what the penalties would be. And I don't have the statute in front of me, but I mean, I'm sure you can go and read it. It's, it's the statute that was passed back in November by this council. And I think it clearly defines what the, what the obligation as well as what the enforcement and penalty would be.
Agenda item number four?
Item number four. Okay. So back in July, and I'm only, I'm speaking pretty much as an avocation for young homeless in the city of Niagara Falls between the age of 20 and, I mean, 12 and 24. Back in July, Mr. Mayor, you actually placed the item for this position on your special meeting, the meeting that no one could speak at at the time. And usually a special meeting is made for things that have a sense of urgency or there's a time, there's a time factor. And then at that same meeting, you removed it off, of the same meeting stating that you needed more information. So today, I, being that, that's not my position anymore, I asked, what was the information that you needed that caused that position to have a six-month lapse of services that serviced youth that were homeless in the city of Niagara Falls? That's one. It's a double question. Once you tell me what that, what that information that you needed, what was done by Pinnacle Community Services afterwards to satisfy whatever it is that, because that, that, that information was never brought up. And, and also what has been done in the process to make sure that that type of service is never lapsed or that, that, that doesn't happen again where that much-needed service in the city of Niagara Falls doesn't get defunded again?
First, I, I guess, I don't, I don't agree with the definition of special meeting because that, that there's nowhere defined as you've indicated it. But that notwithstanding, street outreach program, as well as some to improvements in operations. City government doesn't dictate what Pinnacle does with the money. They simply have to define for us generally how they're going to use it within their programming so that we can properly identify that when we're, when we're reporting to housing and urban development. So that previous item that was on raised a question of potential conflict relative to your position within Pinnacle. And so it was at that point, in order to protect it from being an ethical question, that we pulled it from the agenda. We had further discussions. I believe that that funding ended up being replaced on a later agenda to be approved. So the program was never unfunded. The program was never without funding. As a matter of fact, as this indicates, this is to add additional funding to it, along with some funding for improvements and operations at Pinnacle. Again, I don't know, I don't know the inner workings of Pinnacle, and I don't know how they administer the funds that they receive. I know that they have to outline for our community development department, the purpose for which they are seeking community development funds. This money was needed for the costs and improvements at Casey and Passage House. And so our, our request at this point from Pinnacle was simply to not unplug the money, but just repurpose it.
Well, actually, that was the exact same request that happened on July 10. At the meeting, sir. And the only difference from today is reprogramming versus reallocation. It's pretty much the same thing.
I can't recall the July one, I'm sorry.
Well, that, well, I'll, I'll help you out, especially when it comes down to not knowing what's going on in Pinnacle. So good afternoon, all. I was at City Hall on Friday, and I asked Mayor Restaino to remove our city, Niagara Falls City Street Outreach Program funding request off of the agenda for the next council meeting. He has requested some information from me, which would take time to gather. When I have everything I need to respond to a request, I will share with him, and then it will go to the city council for vote. If anyone has any questions about this, please assure that I'm working diligently to get the information required and that I am working with the city. If they have anything further to ask, please send them directly to me. That's from the CEO. So apparently you and the CEO did have a conversation, and you do have idea of how things work.
We had a-
In regards, hold on, I'm not done. I'm not finished.
We did have a conversation.
In regards to that request, because I have the same request. This was on your, again, when I say special meeting, if we call a special meeting, and that's the reason, and that's probably just my, my wording of it, but what I'm saying is, is if I call a special meeting, that's something that couldn't wait until our regularly scheduled meeting where that podium sits there and people are able to speak. It's most likely a special meeting should be morally for something that's time-sensitive. We have a grant that needs to be fulfilled or whatnot, and so we're going to call a special meeting because it can't wait until the next meeting. Or something that is a sense of urgency. That's my, that's just my definition. And I think anyone else, especially when you don't allow that podium to be there. So with that being said, my question is, and, because I think that was a nice answer for a question that wasn't asked. My question is this. What was done, what was the, what was the, what did Pinnacle do? What, what would you ask Pinnacle? What did you ask? What was the, the, he has requested some information. What was the information that was requested? And then what did Pinnacle do to satisfy the, the six-month gap? Because I mean, for, it takes six months to find out, because you're literally, what you're saying right now, what you're asking was the exact same ask that Pinnacle asked of the council and the administration far as the CDBG cares to act funds. So what I'm asking you is, is at that point, what did they do different? And then what, what fail-safe did they put in place so that this type of program, which is needed, and I pray to God whoever gets it this time, isn't, you know, doesn't have their job pulled off from up under them? Because these youth, there, there's homeless youth. I said that at one of your forums. That's a big problem here in the city of Niagara Falls. That's me advocating for it. I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take that job right now if they offered me twice for it. My thing is, is that, but at the end of the day, regardless of whether I worked the job or anybody up here worked the job, there are still homeless youth in the street that need help. So I'm here to advocate for them. So my thing is, is that if this is something, this is something, this is a need, what has been done to make sure that what happened on July 20th, when it was pulled, doesn't happen again for the sake of the street outreach? Because it's actually great program. You can answer now.
Okay. Well, this is different money than that money. This is in addition to it. It's not six, it's not six months of it being unfunded.
No, no, no. It's, it's what it is. Because I remember-
No, it isn't. This is money, this is money from a project that had nothing to do with this, this money had been approved for these projects.
Back in, this was back in last year?
Actually, 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 in 2020.
Right.
So two years ago.
Right. And then it came back. And, and it came back to you afterwards.
But it, it came back-
I just want to make sure that we're on the same page.
Okay. But it came back, the issue that you're talking about did come back, and then ultimately was approved. And yes, subsequent to a meeting, and I, I just can't recall what the topic of the discussion was, but I can tell you that ultimately, we put the agenda item back on. And I suspect, I don't know, I don't, I can't remember the month, whether it was later in July or whether it was in, whether it was in September because the August recess, but that money was approved. This is a different set of funding that is now being poured in addition to the outreach.
It was still 80,000. It was the same one. I, I have the documentation. I guess the question that I'm having is, is that you asked for specific information. Pinnacle asked for it to be done. What we're asking tonight is the exact same thing that Pinnacle asked, because it's the same situation where they overfunded extra Casey House and Passage House. The money came back. There was $106,000 surplus of money that was extra. And they said, can we put this in this program that actually helps homeless youth, the youth, the street outreach that we're proposing tonight? And you put it on your special meeting, and then you took it off that same night, and you said you have a question. When you took it off, you did that. So my question to you, Pinnacle didn't do that. You did it. So my question is, what is the, because it has to be something very important for you.
I, I think I answered that. I said that my difficulty was your working there and the fact that we were presenting it here. That's all. I just wanted, I just wanted-
I would have to prove myself.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that from a federal perspective, we didn't have any conflict. So for me, it was merely just making sure that I dotted the i's and crossed the t's. There wasn't any particular other issue relative to why I pulled it, except that then became a topic I wasn't aware of before we put it on the agenda. Once I became aware of it, the best effort for me was to make sure that all of the ethics was in place, there were no conflicts. And once I got that defined, the money was placed back in.
So that, that took six months? I guess that's the question.
I guess, I, the only thing I can say to you, council member, your- I, I, I guess, I, I, the only thing I can say to you, council member, you're, you're identifying this as the same money, maybe you're correct. I don't, I can't tell you, I can't tell you yes or no, but it may very well be that that's, that this is the opportunity for them to offer us again to do that.
I just want to make sure, this is, uh, and what I'm talking about, because it's not personal, because I, I, I don't get paid from them anymore, so I can talk about it how I need to talk about it right now. At the end of the day, what I do care about is the services, that's why we're up here. So, we, we protect services, we want to make sure that our city and our government and, and, and our, our, our constituents are getting proper services. So, what I'm saying is, is that's a service, so my thing is, is that, eh, that the, the level of transparency is very low right now, in regards to this. So my thing is, is that what, we need to make sure that we know that there is something put in place, so this doesn't happen.
Well, that, the something that will be put in place is your approval tonight will put that funding in place. Well, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know why their construction came in lower. That I don't know, again, Pinnacle make, like all the other, there are many social agencies that ask for funding. And so they'll come in and they'll ask for a particular project to be funded, and they'll believe they have the appropriate estimates for it. Now whether or not they were able to do things in-house, whether they were able to do things differently, whether they elected to do something different than what they originally had planned, I don't know all of that. Um, ultimately, what they do is they come back and say to us, hey, there's excess money here. And, rather than have it be recaptured, uh, by, by HUD, we would propose to reprogram it this way. And that's the sum and substance of this application.
Um, actually, in January, between late January and around February, actually it was already proposed to, for this position. The, the Street Outreach position, it was proposed and sent to, um, the office. And, it never got resp, so when, when, when they begin to fund certain things such as, you know, um, Pinnacle, uh, the Community Missions, Heart Love and Soul, a lot of these different, even the, um, Street Outreach and Heart Love and Soul, I actually worked with them too as well at that time. They got refunded, but it just so happened that my position didn't. So, and it, and it was already placed, so it wasn't that, you know, that, that one position wasn't actually put on the forefront to say, hey, we need this. It was already there, it's just that afterwards, when it began to, when the votes began to take place, that was just kind of like conveniently left out.
I, I just, a- and sitting back and listening to these changes and stuff like that, but wouldn't the make sure that this program is funded, wouldn't that be on Pinnacle?
No, what happens is Pinnacle puts in a proposal to actually have it voted on by the council, and of course I couldn't vote on it because I was, so I would have recruised myself from the actual vote, because that's, that's what you do, that's, that's moral, you're supposed to do that, right? And then, that would have been on the rest of my colleagues to vote on, and to say, is it worth it, or, you know, whatever the case is. But Pinnacle already put it forward to.
I get back to that, because I, but I'm saying, you, your question is you're asking, if it had been put in a process that this won't happen again, that it will continue to go forward. Wouldn't that be on the entity, Pinnacle, to make sure, and it is a very important program, because I dealt with you on this program. Wouldn't it be kind of up to them to make sure that in their yearly budget, that they said, this position is very important, we have to make sure that in our budget, we have it funded, regardless if we get the money or not from the city? Because getting money and stuff from the city is kind of a question mark, you never know if we're gonna have, what we're gonna have, how much we can give out. Uh, and, and my only question is, wouldn't that be more on Pinnacle to make sure that that very important position is funded?
I think it, I think the question that I have is, especially when you are, when this funding is already funding s- the same Street Outreach down the street. It shouldn't be, you know what I'm saying, i- i- if they're going, if it's gonna be funded for Heart Love and Soul, it should have been funded for Pinnacle. Pinnacle already put it forward, my thing is, is this, because I, I'm, I'm not gonna get caught in that part of the weeds. My thing is, is the, the big mystery question, because that's what, that's, that's what tha- that email was for me. It was just a mystery question, no one knew, what, what was the question, what, what did they need from, you know, Pinnacle? And that never was, that never was brought to me by Pinnacle, nor was that brought to me by the administration, when it comes down to the big question of the information that was needed. So, I guess the, and I don't want to stay on this, because I just want to make sure that this services doesn't get caught up in whether, I don't know, whether it's politics, or, or retaliation, or whatever the case is. I just want to make sure that this is a very special program, you know it's special, and it's a lot of people that know it's special. And it's a lot of work that goes into it, and we have homeless youth, we have squatters. And I, I say that because the, we are gonna vote for this, at the end of the day, we don't see it like everyone sees it in New York City. Or maybe in Georgia, or maybe in Florida, because there, they don't have housing market, like I told, and I told, told the mayor the same thing. They don't have the housing market like we do, where we have a bunch of abandoned buildings. It's more squatters here in the city than you will ever know. It's a lot of people who live in houses that are boarded up. And they're, and they're young, they're young, they're, they're fourteen, fifteen teenagers, babies. So my thing is, is this, I don't want anyone's personal agenda to ever get in front of something that is very important. So, o- overall, overall, my biggest thing is, is this, the, 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 the service is needed. And we, and the city of Niagara Falls went a good half of a year without that service. Now, we can go back and forth on the reason behind it, my thing is, is what is the, what is the final, the final, you know what I mean? That, that, like I said, there were questions and whatever against it, right?
I'm just thinking for down the road, for like next year and stuff like that, to me, would be on Pinnacle to make sure that it's in their budget.
Or we can just make sure that we're being, um, equitable when we're spreading out money. How about that? That's, 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 that's.
The only thing that, the only thing that I could say to that, and, and to be honest, is I don't know how much each entity gets, and what each entity used their money.
Oh, it was, well, uh, it was actually inside of, um, an item that, that you guys voted on, because I wasn't at that special meeting, but long as, long as, a- and I'll, I'll stay on top of it, I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't have like special, um, special issues getting, getting in, in the middle of something that is so important. Homeless youth in the city of Niagara Falls is super important. And, 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 and it doesn't, and, and it shouldn't be affected by politricks. So that's all I have to say about Janat and Muford, thank you. Oh, no, yeah, go ahead, thank you.
No, we don't have, no, we don't have oversight responsibility. So, obviously, there is some reporting, uh, that would be done relative to the expenditure of the funds. But other than that, you know, our, our, the city government's role is to provide appropriations.
Agenda item number five. Agenda item number six.
Number six. So, is my understanding that for, uh, agenda item number six, seven, and eight, and nine? For six, seven, eight, nine, so are these all, uh, approved vendors at the state level, or how does that, oh, does that mean we have a?
Yes, they're either, yep, that's right, council member, they're either by, by bid, or they are by a state contract. So they are all, um, subject to, you know, state, uh, contract or state bid requirement.
So as far as a bid or state, so can a bid be, has, the bid is among just state authorized actors? Or is there someone who's not a state actor or state recognized, that's a bid, that puts it a bid?
Okay, you, you want, when, when we post, um, a request for proposals? It's posted out there, uh, at our website, it's posted out, at a couple of other locations. And, somebody from West Virginia, uh, or someplace else, who manufactures that particular equipment can and often do, uh, put in a bid for, uh, to provide that equipment. You know, in many instances, um, some of these vehicles, um, aren't manufactured here in New York State. They may end up being manufactured somewhere, and then through an authorized dealer, sold in this state. Uh, which, which at that point, that bid might be submitted by that authorized dealer. But, to answer your question directly, yes, if they can, uh, any, any entity anywhere could put a bid in.
Mayor, are we retiring a fire truck for the purpose of the?
Yeah, we're gonna retire some that didn't retire about twenty years ago, those are our.
What's the lifespan of a?
Yeah, those are, those are auxiliary ones right now, and a couple of those need to go. Um, one of them, I think, if my memory serves me, is a cracked frame, um, it's, it's an auxiliary one, so it's not used with regularity. And so we'll be able to take some of the older, um, trucks that are on, that are in service now, and make them our reserves, as we move toward these newer pieces of equipment.
Thank you, I was gonna ask what we were gonna do with the retired rig, alright.
And then obviously the ones that end up, uh, you know, the, the current reserve ones that are really ready for pasture. You know, you'll put those out in an auction and, and somebody will.
Get a piece of it, when we order it today, how long before we see it?
Close to a year, somewhere between six and twelve months. One of the reasons why we want to make sure that we get our, our requests in, I, I had a conversation with the fire chief a few weeks ago about this. You know, it's not like, you know, a council member wants to buy a pickup truck, you might be able to go to a dealer and find one on the lot. There's no lot with these things sitting on them, so you're in a queue of how they get manufactured. So the sooner you get in the queue, the sooner you get your return back.
And there are, it's two years.
Yep.
If you order it today, it's two years before you're gonna see these trucks and stuff like that, so.
Just one last question, as far as drilling down to the next level, so we have the authorized dealer, and then the actual model, do we go into that granularity with the term that, you know, there's a you know, fire or police, and we want that model, or?
Oh, yes, oh, yes, as a matter of fact, the RFP is created by us for our specifications. Because what we may need in the city of Niagara Falls may be different than what they need in Utica. And so, our fire, uh, fighters, our, and our fire administration know what is specifically necessary with regard to, to our community. And so they, they work that into, um, the specifications.
Agenda item number seven. Agenda item number eight. Agenda item number nine. Agenda item number ten.
There is no, there, there is no other waterfront revitalization program studied on.
So I, I, I just was curious about what we did, so I, I, I know, um, Niagara Waterfront Sasaki was in nineteen ninety-two, that was a study. And I know the revitalization draft was in two thousand and four. And then, there's a, the Citizens Map of Niagara Falls by the Waterfront Regeneration Trust in ninety-seven. The Juror Partnership Development Plan for NFIR Corporation ninety-eight, the Main Street Plan for two thousand and one, City of NFA, you know, Niagara Falls USA. Greenway Vision and Project Prop- Proposal, Achieving Niagara's Future in two thousand and two. What I'm trying to say, these seem to be, and I've read these, read these, uh, studies, and it seemed to be what we're already trying to do. So I might think, are we gonna, are we trying to reinvent the wheel, or is there something we can do with this array of studies that we can just start implementing some of these?
Well, none of those are, uh, the same as this, uh, study. Each one of those, in many instances, several of those were specific to proposed development projects. The Greenway is a specific, um, plan relative to the resolution of the relicensing by the New York Power Authority. And, this particular grant, it's five hundred thousand dollars that the state of New York is providing for the local community to develop waterfront, a waterfront revitalization program. And so, the appropriation in twenty nineteen of the city's match sits ready to go. And, the grant also sits ready to go. So if nothing else, this particular, uh, revitalization program and the study developed by this consultant will allow us to perhaps, um, move forward some of those things that were proposed. Twenty, those studies and all of those, um, plans exist. Nothing is the same as what this particular grant will afford the city the opportunity to do. Because in this one, public participation and the local community is setting the standard for what they want to do with their local waterfront. All of those things that you listed are either done by a private developer, a federal or state agency, and have less, uh, local flavor, um, to them.
I would, I, I, I mean, I read those programs, I read, went through those, I would disagree that they do have, they do, they do have, I mean, you want to work with the private, with the public. So I, I believe that, you know, that they, they, because the, the goal is this, we, we're contracting this, this engineering company to, to, to do a, uh, I mean, a study, I mean, they're, you know, trying to just, uh, identify other appropriate uses, the property uses, public access. And I believe we have those other projects, from what I see, did that, so that's what, it seems like we're just recycling some more money to do something we've already done. And that's why, number two, and number one would be, how do they fit, or what would this pertain to the comprehensive plan that was done for the waterfront?
Well, the comprehensive plan, um, I don't know, are you talking about the core city strategies?
Two thousand and nine, yes.
You have the core city strategies, or, or are you referencing the waterfront strategy?
The waterfront would be, because there were the four, there are four areas, you had Devault Highland, LaSalle, Hyde Park, and the core city strategy. The waterfront will fall into that core city strategy, how does this company, as opposed to the many other companies before this company? Unless we went to all those companies and said, they didn't want to do anything, then we said, we landed on this company, but how do they fit in and merge into that comprehensive plan for the core city?
Well, let me first say that this company was also born out of a, out of a request for proposals, so there was a, there was a strict bid process that went forward to try and select who could do this. Um, with regard to the other studies, um, I can only say to you that, um, this particular, um, project, um, if approved allows us, um, in this space and time, to take a look at our, our waterfront, and, and, um, you know, put together a plan for how we want to revitalize, uh, our waterfront, uh, in the city. It, it, while, while a private developer may engage in, um, you know, public meetings and public input. Um, ultimately, the private developer, um, much as the jury plan is, the private developer has a, um, you know, particular interest in their development. You know, the, the jury plan was exactly what, um, Niagara Falls redevelopment had proposed for the city. Um, way, way, way back twenty-five something years ago. So, I would, I would submit to you that plans like that, um, obviously never materialized. Um, so what we hope with this is that we, as a local community, develop a plan, and then it's our plan.
And with that, I, I, I would, I'm gonna ask, so the two thousand and nine. Comprehensive plan, I believe that should be updated to, to twenty twenty-two. And I believe that this should work in that framework for the core city set, core city strategy of twenty twenty-two. So I'm gonna make a motion, or I don't know the process, but I make a motion that we table this until we get that two thousand and nine plan up to date.
When we go for, when we go for, that's what you're saying.
I do have a question, just, just um, to be sure that my way of thinking here, I'm understanding correctly. So this five hundred thousand from the state is earmarked for this particular task, this particular study. It's not that it can be used or repurposed or used in any other way, it must be used on that, that correct. And if we don't use it, we, we forfeit it.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, ultimately, the state, I mean, they have been patient with us from the two thousand and nineteen period.
It's been three years, right?
But.
And is there a timeframe that this grant would expire if we don't expend this money?
I, I, I can, I can't tell you, it's a time period, but I can't tell you that if we're not gonna use it, the state is going to, as they do with so many of the grants that they provide, they will simply say that, you know, the, the grant has now expired, and they'll repurpose the money someplace else in the state.
Right.
Okay, I just wanna understand those pieces.
But it's not, just so I'm clear, is dedicated to? Project, but not dedicated to this company? Or is the company and the project the same?
No, 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 it's dedicated to the project, you're right, not the company. The company was selected again through competitive bid.
How, how much uh public input are we going to um have into this uh project?
I suspect that once the consultant's um agreement should be, if, if it's approved, then the consultant will develop a plan for um, you know, community engagement and then series of meetings uh to discuss, you know, globally, what is it that we're trying to accomplish? What is it that we define as waterfront? And then have, you know, lead conversations to help uh we locals sort of engage in what it is that we can accomplish um through this waterfront revitalization program.
Very similar to the DRI, did I mention?
Right.
Very similar, where, did you remember, I had the meetings at the train station, up like that, they laid out all these different ideas, and what do we like, what do you not like, what do you, you know, they worked it that way there, the ten million.
And that's where I think we have the opportunity to bake into that uh way of kind of conducting the study, the comprehensive plan, and taking a look and seeing what marries up and what complements each other, right?
And, and council member, I, I can tell you that um, I'm not a planner, but all of the planners that I have spoken to since being here have said that, you know, a two thousand and nine comprehensive plan does need to be updated. The question is, it's not an easy process. And um, like I said, you know, in, in the three years here, much, um, nearly two of it, twenty months of it, with, with regard to the, to the impending health, public health crisis, sort of hamstrung the opportunity to even get started at that. We now have a full complement in planning, and I can tell you, the current city planner um has been very vocal in wanting to get started. And I guess when I say get started, I don't wanna mislead by saying that it's gonna happen in a month or six months, a year. That's a process um providing, providing a comprehensive plan. As a matter of fact, if my memory serves me, the current comprehensive plan dated two thousand and nine was a multi-year process to get there. So um, there is, there is a mutuality of um understanding that the comprehensive plan needs to be updated. Many things in that comprehensive plan don't even apply anymore because of changes.
Right, and that's why, before we start, before we start going at our, you know. Developing that task, let's get back on track to say, hey, what's different from the two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty-two, well, two thousand and twenty-three, actually? What's changed, what applies, and let's get a group of, let's get that task force, if you will, and to, to move forward, say, and then let's not wait any time to adopt it. With Niagara Falls, we all want things here now, we wanna develop here now. And, and we can see the, we know that we have the potential to be a world-class destination. And I believe that adopting that plan from nine to twenty-three, I think that's, that's our playbook to run.
Well, let me ask you this.
Yes.
It may very well be that creating this local waterfront revitalization program can be an element that begins the redate of the comprehensive plan.
Could.
In other words, the current plan has a whole outline of waterfront strategies. Well, with this grant from the state, we can actually now begin one facet of upgrading where we gotta get to with a comprehensive plan. And having this, as, as I think the council member indicated, baking this program in to what will become a modernized comprehensive plan. So instead of this being an impediment to improving the comprehensive plan, it can end up being a tool to start that process.
No, no, I, I, I definitely understand where you're coming from, but I, I still, I mean, we can definitely move forward with this and, and, and. People for the money is there, but as terms of making sure that what's not there in the two thousand and nine and what is there is still coherent with what everything is going on. So we don't have to delay anything, but we can still wait to see what we need to do to make sure that everything flows together. That's, 'cause I don't wanna do one thing to have to put something else together, make sure that everything flows. And, and that's what I think, that's what I, that's, that's what I believe the route is to go, personally.
It's kinda like putting a carrot for, for us, and we find ourselves doing so many other new projects and things that may, you know, again, be possibly re-inventing the wheel or something that we could actually, that's already set, that we could possibly apply to. You know, so I'm, I'm, I'm with it as well to make sure that, and it does, it's not gonna take, you know, an act of Congress or God to actually start the process of updating our, it's, our, our comprehensive plan. It's just that, okay, let's make it more relevant, let's make it what it looks like today. May, it may not look a hundred percent nine comprehensive plan, that it could actually gel and kind of blend into what Niagara Falls looks like today. So that process should definitely, and I agree, it should, it should, we need to definitely upgrade it and get it up to date.
But before that, one last one, so mention the event center. Now, I don't, I, I'm, I'm the new, I'm the new guy, but I just wanna make sure that, that I understand this correctly. Um, I, 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 I read an article that said, NFR offered to donate land and provide two point four, two point five million dollars for upkeep. So they donated, they were looking to donate ten point nine acres, donated as a gift, and provide two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for ten years, per, two, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for ten years. Is that true?
No, in two thousand, in April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, Edward Milstein appeared at our, twenty-two, Edward Milstein appeared in our office and offered the following. "I will provide you with parcels of land as we acquire them, as we acquire them, in order to be able to set value so that we could take the tax deduction from the gift to the city." In that particular swath of land, there was the displacement of current homeowners. In that, in that swath of land, there were, there was the, the imposition of uh the Department of Social Services building. So ultimately, the offer was, we'll give you land over time. And we'll also give you, once we give you the land over time, then we'll give you some money too. So the, the proposal in April was insufficient to satisfy um what we believe to be um the necessary development needs. You know, for, you know, develop a full-time workforce for our hospitality workers, uh, many of whom are laid off right now. Um, the ability to put people to work and to, and to bring locals back downtown. Uh, twelve million people who live ninety minutes east and west of the city. Those are the people who we have to look to in November through March. Uh, to do that, you have to have something to bring them down there. I'm not a big proponent that the casino is, is that answer. I think we need uh to take, to take control of our um uh development destiny. You know, all too often, um, there's this idea that, you know, some, somebody's gonna fly in a magic carpet or a position with regard to any particular property owner. The only position I take is that if you're speculating, if what you're doing is taking a hundred and forty-two acres, or if you're taking thirty-seven buildings on Main Street, and you're not gonna do anything with them, then you're really penalizing the development of this community. And when we're talking about hospitality workers, some of whom are among the lowest-paid people that are in our community, and they have to get laid off just before Thanksgiving because there's not enough people to keep, not enough work to keep them working, I think that's outrageous. And if we can do something to extend that period for them, I think that's our, our, our requirement. Now, am, am I telling you that, that the, the proposed park and event center is the only plan? I'm saying it's a plan. It's a plan. And quite frankly, over the course of the last two or three decades, we haven't had any other plan. And, and all too often, we have relied on outsiders to tell us what we need. I'd like to think that once we get past acquisition and we start having a robust conversation about what that thing should look like, what that, what that whole development should look like, then we're in charge. We're the ones making those decisions, we're the ones saying, okay, this is what I think we need, this is what I think we need. You know, there are people out there right now who are, are anticipating that if we're successful in the acquisition, they're ready to jump on board. They're not gonna, they're not gonna help make this thing happen until we know we have the land to make it happen. I, I, again, I'm simply suggesting to you that, that, that that project is a plan. I'm not, I don't ever wanna suggest, because we've had too many people tell us that there are silver bullets. I'm not saying it's a silver bullet. I'm just saying that for me, it's about workforce development, putting people to work. You know, some people don't wanna go and learn a trade, they don't wanna become electricians, they don't wanna become plumbers, they just wanna go work. And in the hospitality industry, there's many jobs that can take folks that have that skill and put them to work. But when they have to choose, because the job is seven months, at best eight months, and they have to deal with things like rent, childcare, food, utilities, the answer, it's just an answer.
And as far as the, you, uh, getting involved, that's what, and getting a holdout of what, what we want, that's why I feel the two thousand, that's why it should probably be updated to the two thousand and twenty-three, number one. Number two, though, I, I just wanna go back to it again, so I just wanna be clear. So, so right now, NFR is saying that they're willing to give the city ten point nine acres. Are you saying that's not all together? Like that, are you saying that's multiple parcels of land, or are you saying that's one parcel, two?
It is several pieces of property, not all of which is currently in their possession. That was presented to me in April of last year. Now, you, you may be surprised, well, why would they offer that? They have the wherewithal to buy people out. They have the wherewithal to do that. And so if, if that was satisfactory to what this workforce project in April of last year, but that's not what's being proposed, and that's not what's being offered. And I can't, I can't speak to whether or not, um, you know, public relations firms are putting the best face on what has otherwise been a very disappointing um, um, developer. Twenty-five years is a long time. And, and I don't know, again, if we don't push the envelope, I just don't know what's left besides another twenty-five years and another twenty-five years after that.
Sure, and, and I won't, and I'm not here to be a disruptor, but I, I, I wanna see growth, and I wanna push the envelope.
I do too.
So I wanna push it, so let's keep pushing. So now I have in my hand a Niagara digital campus that's supposed to be one point four eight billion dollar center, uh, two, uh, fifty-six hundred construction jobs, five hundred and fifty permanent jobs, with an average of, was five thousand employees, with an average of fifty thousand dollar salary per year. This seems to be a plan that they're, I mean, I could read it down. The Niagara digital campus technology center, they, there it is, so six hundred thousand square feet, high-security, technologically-advanced data space center. I see this as something, now, could, the, the comprehensive plan didn't have, didn't include this, so this could be part of that two thousand and twenty-three update, but this seems to be something from them. So, so my question was, uh, my question is, but, actually, it's twofold. One, why haven't we started, you know, getting into, we talked, talking about technology and getting into the new space, that's one question. The other question is, me and you, we had a discussion the last time about gifts. If somebody's giving you a gift, a gift is a gift, whether it's one acre, six acres, ten point nine acres, we could still get that. So why haven't we accepted their gift, and why haven't we, 'cause I, and, and why haven't we worked with them to build something? Because I'm all about, all about, and I mean all about, not, I'm not about myself. I'm about the people, I'm about the city, I'm about growth, I'm about having something being done. And when I hear, when I hear, when I hear, uh, uh, they say, when I hear Herbicon say, Herbicon cannot wait forever. To me, that seems like when they say, well, they can't wait forever, they're waiting on us. So my thing is, what have we done or not been doing to work with, to develop those public-private partnerships, PPP, so that we can move forward to get things done?
Councilman, you're not alone in your commitment to the community. And as a matter of fact, I can tell you, and we've had a number of meetings. I can tell you about a meeting in March of two thousand and twenty-two where we thought that we had a two-project solution completed. I can talk to you about an August two thousand and twenty-two meeting where we, the city, presented to NFR a planned development agreement. The planned development agreement would allow for both projects to go forward. The long and the short of it is, NFR hasn't even made the necessary inroads with National Grid to create the kind of substation necessary to power that particular planned development. So we, in our discussions, have tried very hard to come up with, and all of that, by the way, council member, was presented during the public hearing. I don't know if you were present during that, but all of that was presented. And all of your colleagues had heard all of that information, as well as the information from council that represents all of us about how we worked toward trying to develop a two-project solution. In the end, they said, Herbicon said, that they needed twenty acres. That was said on the record by Herbicon, they needed twenty acres. The acreage that we are seeking, the, the bulk acreage, because there are two wings to this property, the bulk acreage that we're seeking for the park and event center is about ten, about ten. So Herbicon could not get to twenty acres unless you were prepared to abandon Tenth Street, which is a north-south road next to the Department of Social Services building, as well as a variety of alleyways.
Eleven forty Center Avenue, eleven thirty-nine Center Avenue.
Corner Island and Beach, man, I was there.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm telling you right now is, is this, it's a lot of things that Highland Avenue residents actually ask for and they want, and no one's listening to them. Right now, that area, no, no, let me finish. That area is right at this present time, the low-income housing hub of the city of Niagara Falls. There is no financial, no, no financial opportunities in that area. Guess what, most of the people that live there, they don't, a lot of them don't have cars. They already pull, um, pull bus routes out of that area anyway. So you have that, that takes place, you have people who are, are low-income, and they, and they're stuck, they're. We, we know the, the beloved center, that, that was a, that was a landfill, that was, that junk is up under there, right? Absolutely, so guess what happens? When you have people that's already living on top of junk, that says, hey, listen to us, we have a track two that we've been trying to find, that we've been wanting to use some, do some behind town. I mean, that, the, the, that, that the community, we've passed, and we've actually, we talked to you, Mr. Mayor, during that forum, when we started talking about the ARP funds, when we said, we want a community center, a center that has, uh, 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 because you know what happened? Thirteenth, again, no longer, of course, that's in our hands, Center Avenue, torn down. YMCA, homeless shelter, the fourth district in this area, which we're talking about dropping some solar, and, and I'm not against, let me just make that disclaimer, I'm not against solar panels, but what I'm saying is, is you're talking about a portion of the community that has already been neglected, that has already not been heard.
This is actually outside the Highland community.
But it's still.
This is the Highland industrial area where we're talking, and we're not talking about the residential, in the residential area.
So again.
The strip of Highland, are we not working with the Housing Authority to build a few houses, brand-new houses over there?
The problem is.
That are gonna be sold to the public?
No, at the end of the day, like I said, Highland Avenue, I just don't want that, that whole dynamic to be. No, at the end of the day, like I said, Highland Avenue, I just don't want that, that whole dynamic to be painted out there that Highland Avenue is okay, they've been, it's been developed, hold on, wait, wait. It's been developed, it's been developed over and over and over again.
But it has been, but it has been. I'm going back, I mean, I used to work at this place.
Hold on, excuse me, can, can we have a point of order really, uh, uh, of order really quick? If anyone in here i- i- is, is, is tired of hearing what we have to say, if you can, you can, you can be more than happy to excuse yourself, but all of this, the, the, come on and not, we need to move on. At the end of the day, this is our meeting, and we're having a discussion, okay?
But councilman, it happened from all across the state.
I know, but I, but I, what I'm saying is, is they're telling us to move on.
Can we start to wrap it up? I mean, I can understand people's.
Well, what do you have to say about it, sir?
I'm letting you guys talk about it.
No, I want to, but you're a councilman too, so I wanna hear, I wanna hear your opinion.
But I had my questions answered on this prior to the meeting, so I understand what you're, what you're referring to.
I would, I would like to hear your point, because there's a lot of meat in what we're saying. So, I mean, we should put, we should be a collective council, I, so I, I wanna see, hear what your thought process is of what it is that we're bringing to the table as well, because.
Okay, well, I think, I agree with Councilman Tompkins. I think pushing a business away right now is bad business for the city in law. I will say that for this project, I will say it for other projects, that I think will have something good for the city. Like Councilmember Tompkins has said, this is the zoned industrial part of that section of the street, of that section of the city. I think this fits the guidelines for what needs to go there. It's a brownfield, as Councilman Tompkins said again. I think this is a good point.
So what about, uh, what, what Councilman Colley had made mention of even having the conversation of, you know, kind of constructing something greater? I mean, I think, I think that's the thing about it, making something better, because right now, we're talking about extending the footprint and being able to just kind of drop a couple of more, two rows really, because it's a narrow, it's a, it's a very narrow space. So, you know, but I, I, I guess, I'm trying to think outside of the box. We got, see, here's the thing, because we're trying to.
As you said, you said this was just dropped on us, this happened in November, there was a public hearing on the solar farm.
I'm talking about this meeting tonight.
Right, but you're saying we were just notified a couple days ago, and we had to think about it.
No, I'm talking about.
The public hearing on the solar farm was in November, I think.
Did you, did you hear what, now, I, I want you to, I want you to get understanding.
That's when Mr. Rice reached out to all of us. And I had several questions answered from him between now and today, and on the tenth of January, I sent an email to all of my colleagues saying to reach out to Mr. Rice. Councilmember Colley just said he did that. Did you speak with Mr. Rice?
No, but guess what? Guess what happened?
So, councilmember, since you're members.
But that still has to, what happens.
I don't understand that.
Hold on, wait, can, can you?
Right, but you're, you're grilling me that you want my input, and yet you have not reached out to this developer and asked him any questions.
Because guess what I get? I get, I, well, I'm, I'm, we get information from the, the, the community. Because guess what? Then the developers can actually answer some of the community questions, and then we can have a open, no, no. This is a public, is this, did we just have a public hearing today?
No, this is an abandonment of land. We're talking, he's talking about the project.
They had a public hearing for the project.
Yeah, but we weren't talking about abandoning land back then, were we?
No, we weren't.
Okay, so, so it's a different, so don't, don't, don't match apples between apples.
One other thing, to, to just jump real quick, when you guys also talk about another project, okay? Putting a solar farm is a surface project, right? It goes on top of the land. To get into something, a product, to build a building, to do something different, you have to remediate that brownfield. Who pays for it? Who's gonna pay for it? Who's gonna pay for it? Who else there? Who is gonna, you know how much it costs a brownfield remediate? Why do you think brownfields sit empty?
It depends on what the level of contamination is, that's a study to do that.
Over, over in that neck of the, over in that neck of the woods is gonna be substantial, believe me. There was a lot of plants in that area when we were there.
But I think, but I guess the question that.
Ladies and gentlemen, Councilman Miles pointed out a point of order. Please let us have our discussion.
Okay, so with, with that being said, what, with that being said, how do we go to, go home and go to sleep at night, knowing that there's an area where people live in that has that type of contamination?
But nobody lives there.
I mean, I'm talking about in that area, we're talking about the area.
This is Niagara Falls, right?
Niagara Falls is a big contamination area.
What I'm saying, we had Love Canal, there is, Niagara Falls was built on industry and chemical plants and stuff like that. There is a lot of contamination in various areas of the city that we probably don't even know about. They probably know where some is, they probably don't know where. Some people say that Love Canal is definitely not the worst area here. Look at a map of Cuba Island from the fifties, okay? Look at West River Shore Drive. West River Shore Drive probably stops twelve or fifteen houses from where it is now. How do you think they filled that land in over there? They just didn't go out and get dirt and start pouring dirt in there, they had the chemical plants, they had to get rid of products. So what did they do? We find a place to dump it, and they build up. And like I say, look at, go look at the map of Cuba Island from the fifties and look at it today, because it was this long in nineteen fifty, it's this long in two thousand twenty-two. Believe me, that's where they, they get the, the landfill stuff, that's where do we dump stuff? Now, some stuff isn't always hazardous, some stuff could have been good fill, different ash products and stuff like that, but.
But that'll take research.
Niagara Falls, we had, going through downtown Niagara Falls, the hydraulic canal, that got filled in somehow. So how do you think, when you had industry making all this waste, is that, where do you think it went? We didn't have a mountain range here that we could dig, dig out all this dirt and fill everything in with, you know, good, clean dirt. They used what they had, because in those days, nobody knew the risks, nobody knew what would happen, or at least nobody admitted it or did.
Thing is, is that we had a public hearing today that had five items, and I don't think that it's a, it's a real rush after hearing, uh, uh, you know, public, the public opinion from it. And I think that if it's not a, a, a time-sensitive issue, you know, I think that just so we can be able to wrap our minds around the.
To, uh, to, uh, those parcels, this is a, and a portion of it is the dedicated city streets, dedicated alleys, dedicated highways, and that portion of things has to be, I'd say, eliminated. The cities, uh, they're dedicated as those individual streets or alleys, that those portions of things have to be abandoned before anything else can happen around. So that's essentially what you're thinking.
But we're ba, we're abandoning it, and we're already kind of, that vote today, a vote, a yes vote for that would be abandoned, and so it can be already established for the, the reasons that's.
Well, you're, it's, 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 it's pieces of city dedicated right of ways that are within or around private, uh, of own piece of property. And that's essentially what it says.
Like I said, I think, I, I just think, I, I mean, would, I don't see the harm in tabling it, maybe even till the next meeting. Just for further discussion, I don't, I don't.
I'll look at it, when it comes up to the vote, bring up for table.
We have been hearing about this project since November.
I mean, I already, I, I know, yeah.
We've all had an opportunity to talk to him, um, and learn about this, and I think the one thing that hasn't even been mentioned is what's the benefit of solar, of these solar panels and, and to, you know, to residents and the, the assistance they get on their energy bills? And, I mean, there, there are some good things around this. I agree with you, I love your enthusiasm, and.
And then I have a number thirteen.
Thirteen, somewhere they are above this, I'd love to see, like this said, based on the, the plan for the core city planning area, we plan on doing this. I think we should, we should give away our land, we should keep it for the city, and we can develop it, we can need it, we can own it, we can do it, and not give it away. That's why, I mean, looking at table this one too. I'm done with that.
Just, just aside, Mr. Colley, with regard to that, that is a portion, if you recall, that was a portion of Whirlpool Street that went across the aquarium.
So that essentially is going through the aquarium property, that's what this particular piece of land is.
Yeah, and I, and as a matter of fact, as you last said, I've been trying to run outside, you see, drive all these lands and choose to grow, trying to find it, and I'm just envisioning, envisioning what we can do and what, what we should, you know, what we can.
Can do with these, and, and I did go down and try to find this area, but again, if I go back to the, if I go back to the plan, and I go back to even the state plan, because the state plan, they talked about putting some sort of park and event center in this area, talking about staying to the plan and, 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 and an event center, that's in this area right here, that, that, around that vicinity. So the, the, the city and the state has land that's butted together, talking about site control, instead of trying to go after some other properties, why not develop the ones that we already have?
You didn't catch what he said there, I don't think.
Sure.
This, there's the aquarium.
Yep.
And then the state's escaped the discovery center. This is a little road that is between those two properties. We abandoned it, the state's going to buy it, and then that all is one parcel of land. This isn't like a piece of land that's big enough to build on, it's not big enough to do anything with. The most sense it makes is to make their property one giant piece, because the aquarium, if you haven't noticed, it's been expanding and expanding and expanding with the discovery center. So now, all of a sudden, you're gonna have to, stop, wait a minute, this isn't our land, we have to, we can't do anything with this little stretch, we have to go around it. Doesn't make sense to hold back a development that's been moving forward, which is also part of the comprehensive plan.
But then why would we need to abandon it to the state then?
Because we're, we, no, we don't abandon it to the state. We abandon it, and then the state will buy it from us.
Did they say, they, we got a, did they give a number? Did they give a number for this?
I don't know if we have a number or not between the two people.
We're gonna, but we're gonna abandon it.
But we have to abandon something, and, do you understand what abandonment is? What, what is abandonment that we're doing here?
It's a dedicated roadway, it was the roadway that went from, from, from Second to, to connect the Whirlpool Street, went right behind the burning, it was that little road that had the stoplight at the end of the corner of Cedar and, and Wood. The roadway, that's the roadway that went, it's not there anymore.
Right.
It's, it's, it's a fiction, it's just a dedicated area that was a road.
But abandoning something is simply, all we're doing is saying, this is no longer a road. That's what we're doing, we're saying, this is no longer a street, this is no longer a road, it's now just a piece of property. Because if you don't abandon it, it stays a road. You have to take the designation away of a road, or a street, or a boulevard, or whatever it is. Until we take that designation away and make it a piece of property, you couldn't build on it, because it's a road, it's a street. So abandoning it isn't saying, we're not gonna do anything with this property, we're abandoning it as a street, or an alley, or an avenue, or a boulevard, whatever it is. I don't know if you quite understand what the abandoning part is. That's all we're doing, is making it no longer a road, we're just making it a piece of land instead of being a street.
Sure, I understand, but what is the purpose?
The city of Niagara Falls is gonna abandon it, we're abandoning it to, as a Department of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation, that, I, is that state, is that federal?
State.
No longer the city, it's no longer the city. I'm saying, no, what if we can infill it?
But it, it's in the middle of their land.
It's now in the middle of their land.
But that, but that piece of, see, that, that piecemeal, that goes back to why we should take back and take a comprehensive look at the whole project, that's the whole point.
I, I, I don't think that you've looked at what this project is, taken overall picture of what we're looking at here. If you went out at midnight, there's no way you got the general skull. If you would have went over to the aquarium, and you would have talked to the manager of the aquarium, he would have walked you through that lickety-split, and you would have looked at it and said, this makes sense.
And that's why I wanted to table it, so I could talk to him.
Well, you had time, you had time to do your job, if you didn't do your job, that's on you, not on tabling it. You know, this stuff has been around for a while, this hasn't been new stuff. So you need to, you need to do what you gotta do ahead of time, you don't just do it, oh, I didn't have enough time to do it, so we gotta table it. Well, there's other stuff that needs to move forward, this needs to move forward. There's no reason to hold back abandoning a property from being a street or a road to build just a piece of property so it could be used for something else.
Let me ask if, if I can understand where you're coming from. So basically, what you're saying, and I'm, I might be thinking the same thing, is, honestly, you just gave me the definition, but isn't, that's not only what's happening here. So basically, okay, if we have to abandon the street, because it's no longer a street, we, can we do that without moving forward with any other projects on that space? So now we're abandoning it, so then we can have that, you know, that whole scope of exactly what's gonna happen with it? Like, right, and that's with any of these abandements, the Delaware Avenue, same thing, I guess the question.
And then Chris would be able to tell. So we abandoned Delaware Avenue, all right? At that point in time, it's ours, it's still our land, nothing there, it's now, instead of being Delaware Avenue, it's property, whatever it is, just a piece of land. If we go to sell that property, it then comes back forward, correct? To sale in the city. So it would come back to us, saying, okay, this property that's now just dirt, Mr. Miles would like to buy it. Mr. Miles wants to give us five hundred dollars for that property, do you accept his offer?
So, so after the vote, like, so that's, I guess that's the question that I'm asking.
Alls we're doing here is taking away the designation of being, like I say, a street, or an alley, or whatever. Alls we're doing is making that a piece of property.
Right, and, but I guess the question is, is that are we yielding it over, and that's what you're asking, are we yielding it over to the state?
The one on the state, I would have to defer to Mr. Mayor, probably.
See, that's why you could.
Uh, the, the piece on the state, the, the Whirlpool property?
Right.
Is it automatically going from this vote to the state? Or is the state now going to purchase it from us?
We, we've had conversations with the state on, on, uh, the potential purchase of it.
So.
So, so, so is yes?
So, so no, they, potential purchase of it.
So, so after today.
So basically, we get rid of it as Whirlpool Street, it becomes a piece of land. Now that we have a piece of land, the state will say, okay, we'll give you X amount of dollars for it, will you accept it?
So from twelve to fifteen, after, i- if that's voted in, we still own it after?
Yes.
And, and, and anybody that wants to purchase it afterwards, it'll have to come back to us for a vote. I just wanna make sure I say that on record.
Yes.
But then, but with that, Councilman Miles, the whole point of us abandoning it, because it's this little strip, just imagine if you got a Pac-Man, and you have a little stripper row right here, who's gonna buy that stripper row other than the guy that has the rest of the Pac-Man? So they're, you're automatically gonna get, it's gonna go to them.
In the meantime, having that road, we're still gonna send the city plows down there, and the city police are gonna have to do it, and if there's any kind of incident over there, uh, something happens, somebody gets hurt, the city's gonna be liable for it. Why would you hold these little itty-bitty pieces of land if you don't need to hold these little itty-bitty pieces of land? Because somebody wants to do something with them. What, I mean, I don't know, I don't deal with what if, because in Niagara Falls, we've had too many what ifs. What if Wonder Falls? What if the underground aquarium? All these things, well, what if?
What if Centennial Park?
And guess what, where are we to go?
We're saying the same thing, I mean, you're saying the same thing about everything else, but Centennial Park is an if.
Everything, like you said, but what you're dealing with here is that you have something concrete.
But we can't cherry pick what.
Well, no, but we can cherry pick what we're doing right now, because we don't have anything on Centennial Park right now. We're looking at forwarding a purchase.
Still an if.
This here is.
That's another if.
A nice project in front of us.
I mean, no, and I'm not, let me tell you, I'm not, I, I, I wanna say it again, it's, don't turn this into a solar farm. I'm not against.
But that's what we're dealing with.
Yeah, I'm not dealing with, I'm just talking about how we're going about, see, it's called a culture of how we're governing. I'm talking about how, once we do this, and we have, we sit in front of our, our constituents, and we say, hey, okay, you know what? I could have thought this way, but maybe since I heard this, I wanna think about it for a second, just a moment.
Like I said.
It's not, it's not going against the solar, because I, then, I, I don't want y'all to paint such a, 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 a distorted picture as if we're trying to fight the solar farms. We want, we want development in the city of Niagara Falls, we want things to happen, but the thing is, is that the way that things have been happening has not been all that great as far as how we have been governing locally. So my thing that I'm asking, that's why we talk about tabling, it's not talking, listen, I, I, I'm a fan of solar farms.
My question for you is, why, why would you not want to table just abandoning a road or a street?
Well, no, no, no.
When you know it's a.
You know what just happened? You just asked a question that you didn't even know.
That's right.
That had to do with this.
No, because, you wanna know the truth of marriage? I've had this discussion, and I was told that when this parcel becomes a parcel, that the state wanted to buy it from us.
And we didn't, but the thing that you couldn't answer is, is that.
I couldn't have answered definitively, yes.
Right, so, so the thing is, is that when we get this type of thing, and we just had this tonight, you just got clarification tonight, although you knew about it since November, I keep hearing November, I know, all right.
That's for the solar farm.
Yeah, but that's what I'm talking about, but the thing is, is that when you get more clarification, and when you get more input, then it's okay to just think about it.
You know that the fun, the fun thing about the clarification is it took me a minute to ask the mayor, it took him a minute to answer me.
Okay, so, and guess what?
It was a nice and simple answer. But again, my question is, what we're looking at tonight is taking something that is a road, a street, or an alley, and saying, you're no longer a road, a street, or an alley, you're dirt. Why would we hold back on that?
And footprint, that's why we.
Why would we hold back on it?
We, we're extending footprints.
We're not extending anything, we're taking the road, the alley, the thing, we're saying, you're no longer a road and alley and street.
Inside of the supporting document, is that we're extending the footprint. That's why I wouldn't even mention that if, if I didn't read it.
They would have to buy that land from us. Now, would it make sense for him to be the person to buy it? Absolutely. But if he comes to us and says, I'm gonna give you a hundred bucks for it, and we say, no, we want ten thousand dollars, and he's, I'm not giving you ten thousand dollars, then we'll continue to own it, but no longer do we have to maintain it as a road, a street, a thing, it's now just ground, it's now just dirt. That's a smart thing to do, because you can't build anything on the road. You have to, at some point in time, you're gonna do anything with it, or what if, or whatever, it has to become buildable ground. You can't put a house in the middle of Sixteenth Street, you can't put a house in the middle of Madison, you know what I mean? You gotta make it a lot somehow, you have to make it a. You have to make it a number that makes it just a piece of dirt. And that's all we're looking to do tonight.
That comes with planning, I mean, that comes with an actual plan.
What's that?
That, that comes, saying whether or not we wanna take, cause, cause once, if we do abandon it as a strip, it's not gonna be a strip, and what are they gonna do? They can grind it up, they can expand it with the other ones, they can mold it into their-
Who could do it?
Whoever's taking that, whoever's taking that-
No, they don't, they don't own it. They can't take it until they purchase it.
But that's the whole point. If they do, we could do it rather than having someone else do it.
Do what?
Whatever we, that's the whole plan.
But what do you do what? They own the big parcel of land and they're putting a solar farm in. They're asking, we're asking to abandon making the roads that are near it and around it to become not being a road and become a piece of dirt. That's all we're asking. Well, objecting now, objecting now makes absolutely zero sense in the picture of doing business in Niagara Falls, in my opinion.
So would it be turning down a ten point nine acre plot of land with two point five million dollars?
But it's not a ten point nine acre plot. It's not a ten point nine acre plot. It's pieces of a ten point nine acre.
So it's pieces, so why, so we can set pieces, why not set ten point nine acres?
Why are you gonna accept ten point nine acres? Is that-
No, we're good, we're good. We're good. I'm good, I'm good.
Agenda item number fourteen. Agenda item number fifteen. Agenda item number sixteen. Agenda item number seventeen. Agenda item number eighteen. Agenda item number nineteen.
Number eighteen? I just want a clarification. Should that be D A S N Y or is D A Z N Y? Or is that the actual correct? Cause I thought, is that a, or is that, is that two different plans?
Councilmember Vash, D A S N Y. It is a typographical error.
Okay, just, just checking, cause I'm, I'm a new guy, so I just wanna make sure I'm not-
I'm done with you.
Agenda item number eighteen.
Now, just, just a, just a quick point of these. I am okay, I still would rather see the LaSalle planning areas be a part of it, but I am okay with, with, with what they're planning. I mean, they seem to have a, it, it seems to be a plan. I would love to see it part of a, a bigger plan, that's, would, would be no more. But I still think with that area, that's sort of out there, um, away from the core city project, I still think even with the plan, we could have that plan in motion and we don't have to necessarily stop that motion, but we can still let them go. So I, I just feel that that's, that, those are good moves in the LaSalle planning area to keep those going. That, that's, this is when I, I say that piece.
Agenda item number nineteen. Agenda item number twenty. Agenda item number twenty-one. Agenda item number twenty-two. Agenda item number one. City Clerk's report for the month of November twenty twenty-two received and filed. Agenda item number two. City Clerk's claims for the month of December twenty twenty-two received and filed. Agenda item number three. Mayor's approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixty-five received and filed. Agenda item number four. Approval of program, reprogramming Pinnacle CBG CV funds.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Much needed.
Councilmember Tompkins.
I said, it's much needed, yes.
I heard you, yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
This item has been approved. Agenda item number five. Approval of reprogramming ESG funds to Pinnacle.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
This item has been approved. Agenda item number six. Approval of the contract to Empire Emergency Apparatus for Holomotile Two's option for aerial ladder truck fire apparatus.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number seven. Approval of the contract to Churchville Fire Equipment Corp. V number seven oh five for fire apparatus dash one, Pierce aerial ladder truck for Niagara Falls Fire Department.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
This item has been approved. Uh, agenda item number eight. Approval of the contract to Devo Safety and Supplies V number seven nine seven for thermal imaging cameras for the city of Niagara Falls Fire Department.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Item has been approved. Item number nine. Approval of the contract to Low Inc. V number two four eight four for purchase of utility trailers for the city of Niagara Falls. I'm sorry, DPW.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number ten. Approval of consultant agreement Environmental Design and Research Landscape Architecture Engineer and Environmental Service DPC Local Waterfront Revitalization Program.
I make a motion to table. I don't, when do I do that?
Second.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Okay, vote to table. Councilmember Bax.
No.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
No.
Councilmember Zaj, I mean, Council Chairman Zajak.
No.
This item has been approved, not to-
No, then we have to move it.
This item has failed not to move. We're gonna take the vote now? It's failed to table. I'm sorry, correct. Okay, now we're gonna vote on it. Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
No.
Councilmember Miles.
No.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
Three, two item, this has been approved. Agenda item number eleven. Approval of consent to transfer of imaging member interest corners to on town hall homes.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
This item has been approved. Agenda item number twelve. Relative to the, Councilmember Tompkins.
No.
Council, Council Chairman Zajak.
No.
Item fail. This item going for a vote. Councilmember Bax.
Oh, we gotta move it.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
No.
Councilmember Miles.
No.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
This item has been approved, three yeas, two nays. Uh, agenda item number thirteen. Relative to the partial abandonment of portion of Second Street, Whirlpool Street, north of Walnut Avenue.
I make a motion to table.
Second. Call the roll.
We're gonna vote for the table. Councilmember Bax.
No.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
No.
Council Chairman Zajak.
No.
This item has failed. We move before the vote.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
No.
Councilmember Miles.
No.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
This item has been approved, three yeas, two nays. Agenda item number fourteen. Relative to the partial abandonment of a portion of Seventeenth Street between Pennsylvania Avenue and Delaware Avenue.
I make a motion to table.
Second.
We're gonna vote for the table. Councilmember Bax.
No.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
No.
Council Chairman Zajak.
No.
This item has failed, three nays, two yeas. We're gonna move for the vote.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
No.
Councilmember Miles.
No.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Councilmember, Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
This item has been approved, three yeas, two nays. Uh, agenda item number fifteen. Relative to the partial abandonment of a thirty, a three hundred thirty foot portion of Delaware Avenue.
I make a motion to table.
Second.
Vote for the table. Councilmember Bax.
No.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
No.
Council Chairman Zajak.
No.
This item has failed, move to a vote.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
Just to be clear, just to make a comment. When I table these things, it's, again, it's keeping to the bigger vision. There's a greater purpose that can be done. No, for a vote, no.
Councilmember Miles.
No.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
This item has been approved, three yeas, two nays. Agenda item number sixteen. Relative to the City Council of the City of Niagara Falls, New York declaring its intent to act as lead agency for the State Environmental Quality Act review for the Catherine's Travel Pizza, I mean Plaza Project, classified as a Type One action.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number seventeen. Relative to the adoption of the twenty twenty-two Niagara County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number eighteen. Relative to the Restore New York Committee Initiative Municipal Grant Program Application.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number nineteen. Relative to appointments to Historic Preservation Board.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number twenty. Relative to Reappointments, uh, Appointments to Zoning Board of Appeals.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number twenty-one. Amendment Relative to the Reappointments, Appointments to the Planning Board.
Move it.
As amended.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number twenty-two. Relative to the Appointment to the Traffic Advisor Commission.
Move it.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Council Chairman Zajak.
Yes.
This item has been approved. Um, the good of the community speakers. The first speaker is Jennifer Lamoy.
I like that pizza, that excellent, but it made me laugh. Thank you. The constituents respectfully love your enthusiasm, and that of you too, Councilman Miles. And I didn't like the little dig that you pulled on that, 'cause that wasn't you, you know, stating that you love his enthusiasm. For the good of the community, these dirt deals, I'm sick of them. I'm sick of the three to the two, I'm sick of it. So remember that, everyone remember that, please, excuse me, so that it's clear. Important to state that violations of constituents' personal space can be very costly to politicians and city workers. I speak from personal experience witnessing a politician who is presently in office demonstrate nothing less than inhuman treatment, which can also be construed as sexual harassment towards a member of my immediate family who is disabled. You see, here's a couple notes that I made. What if? Why not? We need definite answers. We need definitive answers. Uh, also, let's see, let me just continue with mine here then. Secondly, even though last year's council members heard every presentation except Colley, I have to point that out because the mayor had said that, "Oh, they all heard all the presentations, you know, but you didn't." But at the same time, we heard it too, and again, it's three to two, three to two. So this is just nonsense. Again, remember, it's election year, your vote counts, every vote counts.